From the 1850s that showed what items came to Fitchburg on the railroad. So that showed that people were still using stuff in the 1850s, even though the rest of the world had moved on to pipes. So Mr. Puma took all of this material and then turned it around in the Socratic method. So kids came and they got to answer questions and it was a joy. And the kids who came, you guys, you learned, you learned a lot about Fitchburg. Does it make you love Fitchburg more, knowing all this?
Well, I know I know a lot more.
What's that?
I learned, I learned a lot more about Fitchburg in, in this program.
Yep.
Like, now I know a lot more like about where, how the Rollstone Boulder got down there and that stuff.
Did the Rollstone Boulder roll down the hill?
I do, no.
No.
A common misconception.
How about you, Mary Davis? How, what, what, how do you feel about Fitchburg after taking Fascinating Fitchburg?
I feel much happier that I know a lot about the city that I grew up in.
Okay, well, you got a lot of, you got some growing to go. That's, that's great. You, both of you were wonderful and the whole class, I mean, this whole group, this is right, we did this at Rheingold, so shout out to Mrs. Clark and Mrs. Wiley, our administrators. You know, this, this was great. This was great. And thank, thank you both for coming and please share your information about Fitchburg with, you know, everyone you meet because this is what makes the city great, that we carry this on. That triangle, that bottom part of the triangle, people, that's how we learn.
Thank you very much.
Okay, um, we are going to move along to our school committee and member and student reports. So, school committee chair report is traditionally done by the mayor and in her absence, I prepared a tiny bit of a report, which is, I picked up the newspaper on Saturday as I always do. What's that?
Teachers, before you, before you leave, I would just like to invite you, Mrs. Cragan, Mrs. Pierce and I have been leading the school committee charge against the charter schools.
Thank you.
And
Thank you.
There was a meeting Thursday afternoon with Desi coming in and we're trying to, you're leaving, but it's, if we get another charter school in within five years, they would get about 1,150 students. That would be about 20% of our students, which you know then would be a reduction in programs, staff and educational opportunities for our students. And this is the third go-around for this group.
Yep.
So we need your support Thursday afternoon to turn out like you have tonight to help dissuade the Commissioner of Education to put another charter school in the city of Fitchburg. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Stevens. That was, that was very well said. I concur. I tried to distribute flyers among everyone before the meeting and we will certainly get the public information out. I'm really proud of our schools. I'm very proud that, to see so many of you. I see many, many friends here and I also wanted to do a shout out to Ms. Rumana Ashraf. Rumana Ashraf is a sophomore at the Cent, at the Fitchburg High School and on Saturday she had an editorial in the newspaper. So she's a sophomore. She published an editorial in the Sentinel and it was all about Islam. And I had met her the previous week at the open house for the Amadea, I'm probably saying that wrong, but the Amadea Mosque, which is down at 350 or 370 Main Street. And Rumana is, loves science, loves her AP Science classes, she even loves chemistry. She loves the science classes that hurt your brain. And she was so sharp, I thought, wow, this is really, you know, wonderful student. And I was going to speak to Mr. Roach about her and then she has an editorial in the paper. And I just thought, my goodness, you know, Fitchburg Public School kids amaze me, amaze me. And it was a really well-written article about what Islam is and how these awful things happening in the world have nothing to do with the Quran and have nothing to do with the practice of the religion. And she wrote very eloquently and I'll write to her myself, but I wanted to put it out there for the public. Go check out the Saturday Sentinel, it's a great editorial. All right, and moving on to the resource committee.
Resource. As Chairman of the Resource Committee, which also includes the negotiating team, I am also very disappointed what has happened to our negotiations with the teachers. We had a meeting scheduled for Wednesday, but they chose to cancel it to go to mediation. And we did have another offer for them, but they chose not to accept that. And, so I too am very disappointed and I just want both sides of the story to be heard. Thank you.
Thank you. Policy committee?
We have an action item tonight, the second reading of the internet publication. And we have a meeting on Tuesday, December 15th at 5:00 PM at Sells Creek.
Student support committee will be meeting next Monday at 5:30 at Central Office, which is the third floor of South Street School. Parents, teachers, everyone is welcome. And I think that's it for now. And then we have Executive Committee. We do not have our student tonight. We, Lizzie didn't think she was going to come. Do we have either, do we have Yasine, Yasin, Yasine Mary or Nazani here?
No, they, they are going to be our new
Our new representatives?
Representatives.
Okay. I know that we will have both Lizzie and Sabrina next week. We, we as a school committee have a little something for them, so we'll, we'll see them next week. All right, so no student report. We need to move on to approval of the minutes from previous school committee meeting, which is November meetings. That was November 16th. Uh, excuse me, there is an executive session tonight. So we will have the executive system, session before we reconvene only for the purposes of adjournment. All right, on to number three, approval of the minutes. So I hear a motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, and that is Beth and then that is Marissa. Okay, and all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, motion passes unanimously. Yes, there is an executive session and that brings us to new business. Anyway, unfinished business from previous meetings and also communications. Public comment, which we had moved up ahead and now we move on to the superintendent's report.
Okay, just a couple of, you have a couple of different things in front of you that I just want to note. One is, there's, I've been compiling a list of the district innovations. First draft went out today and then just since that draft, I've had four or five other people send me, you know, more lists. So basically, this is in preparation for Thursday's meeting on the charter school hearing. I'm going to provide like we did in the past, all of the things that we're doing.
Great.
Then you also have a copy of my testimony and really the focus of my testimony is that I actually take the definition right out of the law of what a charter school is supposed to do and provide and show in many ways that our schools are actually doing a lot of that. And we had a great example of it today. We had a site visit today from the Department of Education and a team from Holyoke. And they came to visit the Goodrich School, you know, because they're looking to replicate what we've done at the Goodrich School. And I was thinking today that they would be the second district to come and actually look at what's happening there and replicate it. Two years ago, Taunton Public Schools came, they sent a team for about five hours and then basically created a school exactly like the Goodrich School. And the team today from the department, there were three people from the Department of Ed and four or five people from Holyoke. They spent about two and a half hours at Goodrich, really learning what it is that we've done there and the kind of work that the staff do with the students at that school. So again, here we are, quote unquote, traditional public school system, creating incredible innovations and actually replicating those innovations in other districts. So that's just one example, but we have many, many examples and they're in the testimony that you have from me. The next thing is, I brought together a group of about 20 people from the community last week, including the police chief who's here today, because of my concern of the impact of opioids on the families of our students. We're trying, we're really trying to keep a tab and the pulse on this in terms of how it's affecting our students. And really, right now, the way it's most affecting our students is in their families. It's actually not so much with our own students, but the impact this is having, having. And as you know, from The Hungry Heart, which was a movie shown at Monty Tech about three weeks ago, and all of the publicity that's been about this, is it affects everybody. And this is not about criminals. This is about, you know, regular folks who get a prescription and because of an addictive nature, they can become incredibly addicted on this and it can destroy their family. So what we're going to do is, in the, in the, in the idea of creating a safe place over the holiday, a lot of kids are going to be home and possibly unsupervised. So we're going to be raising awareness to families about the existence of opioids, not, you know, in a lock and key, but in their own medicine cabinets. And in coordination with the Chief of Police and the Police Department, we're going to have a collection site on December 19th, Saturday, December 19th, from 10:00 in the morning until 2:00 in the afternoon at the new community center, which is at the Intermodal, right next to the Fitchburg State University PD Center. So the Police Department will also be collecting codes. It's a coat drive that's going to be happening and at the same time, we're going to be setting up. So there's a flyer that I've made in English and Spanish that will go home to all of our families, encouraging them to go through their medicine cabinets and look for medication that's no longer being used, gather that together and bring it to the community center in Fitchburg on Saturday, the 19th. Yes, Marissa?
Is there a timeframe for that on December?
10:00 to 2:00.
It's not in the letter.
No, I'm going to send out, we just finalized the time today. So this is still a draft, but it's Saturday, December 19th. And then the last piece is, we've been working with the student support committee and Jean, you and your husband have done the line, heavy lift on this is the survey. So we've created a parent guardian customer survey. It's in English and Spanish and it has gone out today. And it's basically, we're trying to get a sense of the, the parents' satisfaction with the schools and really, what, what kinds of things can we do differently? What kinds of things would improve what we're doing? Very general questions. And I have to say, I sent it out this morning at 10:00 and within two hours, we had 150 surveys had been filled out. So it's really great information. It has no personal identification of a classroom, a teacher, it's a school. And it's really general about, you know, their language, their background. And then, you know, how, how do they feel about after-school activities? How do they feel, feel about, you know, the way they're welcomed in a school? And I have to tell you, because, you know, I probably shouldn't have been up there, but I'm, it's kind of addictive once you start looking at it. And I wanted to see, okay, these, it's really, it's going to be very affirming, you know, to the work that's going on in the schools. And then there's a place for comments, a lot of activity around the questions on after-school programs, wraparound things, you know, what kinds of other things that could happen. So I think it's going to be a really good gauge to say, who is our population right now? What are the things that are really working that we're doing? And then what can we do to improve what we're doing?
So I have a question about that, Andre. So it's gone to every email contact you have, right?
Yes, through X2.
Through X2. So that's probably pretty close to full percentages, right? I mean, is it, does it make sense
No.
To post it onto the website?
We're going to do, we, we're going to do a couple of things. So then we're going to send a notice home that it's there and make it available and
Okay.
Give people the link to it.
Okay.
And then I'm trying to find out, I've had a couple of emails already from parents who tried, because you're supposed to do, if you have kids at three different schools, you're supposed to do three versions of it. And I think some folks have done it and I think what you need to do is log out and then log back in again. So I'm going to send another email letting people know that. And then we'll be compiling this information to look at and it can actually help us to drive, I know there's been a lot of interest from the school committee on after-school programs. You know, what kinds of things can we do to provide since 21st century has been disappearing? You know, what can we do? And we also asked, you know, that question about, would you pay for an after-school program? If so, this much, that much? It's really 60/40 would pay for an after-school program. So I know one of our concerns was that we don't automatically assume things.
Yeah.
Just say, well, we can't have after-school programs because people won't pay for it.
Or we don't
So part of this was to find out if we did have one, would people pay for an after-school program? So I think it'll be really good information. So it's, it's available out there. I have a copy of it at my office and, you know, maybe what I'm thinking we could do is, I could post this on, on our website
So that's
So people can go and look at what the questions are and, and then also have a link there.
So word of mouth too, if parents start talking to each
Yeah.
And say, have you done the survey? Have you done the survey?
We want as much feedback as we can. It's in English and Spanish. You know, I'd had 20 people already by tonight who had taken it totally in Spanish.
Great.
So it really reaches a group. And I got a, a communication from someone in the Hmong community saying, you know, what can we do to help get this out to our Hmong and Laotian community?
Wonderful.
So that they can also participate and he said he would help to do that. So I think it, it really has some potential.
That's great.
Okay, so everybody probably have been wondering, you know, what other activity we've got going on here. And Jeremy is here and the Chief of Police is here, Officer Lambert and some others. And one of the things that I've talked to you that I was interested in doing was in having a search at the high school, by dogs, a dog search at the high school for drugs. And that's actually something that the Sizer School is doing, I think Monty Tech, there are a number of other schools that do it. It's at random. It's really not based on a particular incident or anything, but it's an opportunity to just educate the whole community of that. So I've asked, the chief is here tonight, Jeremy is here and Officer Lambert, to come and give us some info, give you information about that, what that would be about, and then take it from there.
So, so what's next? So what?
Oh, I have another question. Is this something, we're going to have to revisit our privacy policy? Do we have a privacy policy?
No, the, my understanding is, and this is mostly districts, is that under the new laws that were enforced, you know, what, eight or nine years ago with, that
Yeah, these are
Where lockers became
Public
So this is, this is all public property.
Okay.
So, you know, they're, they're, no.
All right. And this is, this is done in pretty much every school I know of, so that is a high school. I don't, I don't know about middle schools, but Well, we probably need to start in the middle school after that.
Yeah, yeah.
And the students know that their lockers are not their private property?
It's in the handbook. All of our handbooks.
Yeah.
I think it's great. I think it should happen as soon as you can make it happen.
So the purpose of this was really to, you know, like I said, I've, this has been going, I was in Barnesville like 25 years ago when we were doing this and it was just, it becomes just a part of the routine and it's saying that this, this, these are public areas, these are our schools. And it's a way of saying, we, we control what's in them, we're not in them, and this is one of the ways. I also like the fact that they're just there to do their part of it and this is not, this is not about law enforcement, this is, this is, here's what we're doing and then what you, the next step is up to the school. So that, that part is, is, is good. I like that. So any questions before?
Well, I would ask this, because you, you've made that point a couple of times, that it's not about law enforcement and that there are some situations where the school would deal with it. But what would the school do if, what are some of the?
You know, we would, like any scenario that happens like that, where, you know, there's a substance violation, a chemical health violation is how we describe them in our handbooks and per the MIAA to the Athletic Association. You know, we address it individually with the student and the family. There are rules against that, there's typically a consequence, but usually we also look to
Do a little update for you. There are a couple of things. One is the park testing, the assessment that was just given, but mostly the conversation is to bring you up to date on where the state is and where we are in terms of next year. And really, if we were to stay with what we're doing, and I'm not talking about paper or technology right now, but just the same, it's basically, you don't even need to contact the state, it's just kind of the default that you're going to do the same thing. But Paula will bring you up to speed on that.
Thank you. So in your packet was a redacted copy of the parent report. So every student in grades three through eight and some students at Fitchburg High who participated in Park last, last spring, received a copy of a report that looked like this. So I just wanted to take a couple of minutes to review the content so the folks at home know they should be looking for these documents if their children are in grades four through high school. And just a point of information, that the public release of the school and district accountability based on this data will be made by the Department of Ed on Wednesday. They're also hoping to release information on commendation schools and as that information is updated, we'll bring it to you in the second meeting this month. We'll also need to decide by December 18th if we're going to do paper or technology and we're meeting with the principals on Wednesday to discuss that with them. But we will be in year two administering park this spring. Now, we also still must administer the MCAS science test at grades five, eight in the high school. And the high school will still administer MCAS for its graduation requirements in English Language Arts and Math, and there will be no park opportunity for the high school this year. So the park will just be in grades three through eight, English Language Arts and Math. So this particular form is the new report for parents. They're all in color. A copy will be placed inside the cume for each child. But just to, there is a website, it's called UnderstandTheScore.org and it's actually a pretty in-depth, written pretty, in pretty much plain English, an in-depth guide for parents to try to understand because these documents, and they are translated into about 12 different languages, but they're pretty complicated. The first is that the, this is all about progress towards meeting grade level goals. So different from MCAS, these are about mastering grade level skills as defined by this test. And this will be a challenge for parents who have students in grades five and eight because their MCAS scores still have the old MCAS reports and the number, the scales for the scores are not the same. We mentioned this last, at the last meeting, but the MCAS scores max out, a perfect score is two, is it 260 or 280? 280? Whatever. This is now 650 to 850. So it's very different. The MCAS score has four score points. Warning, needs improvement, proficient, advanced. This has five score points, level one, two, three, four, five. And level four and five in the green box really indicates, and I want to get the language exactly correct, students performing at levels four and five meet or exceed the expectations for that grade level standard. So it's different from proficient or advanced. Similar, but different, yeah. There is no warning. So these, these reports have a front and backside. The backside actually says level one is, did not yet meet expectations. Level two is partially met, level three approached, level four met, level five exceeded. So the, the information that will be generated for the schools in the district, and we're pulling that off now and we'll share it with principals on Wednesday, actually gives you a color-coded view of how many students, what the percentage is at the district and then at every school, at every grade level in both content areas for those five score points. One of the things we would ask parents, if, if parents are listening or watching or as they're trying to deal with is, as they, that they call their principal or communicate with their child's teacher to try and work out, because this is new. Even if you're looking at the, they're in black and white, the reading and writing box, reading score range 10 to 90, those are not score ranges that were in the MCAS. And your child's score is 51, what does that mean? It's above the district average, which was 47 in this sample. It's at the state average. Does that mean the child is average? Actually, no, because if you look at that orange to green, that child is slightly above 750, which puts them in that level four, which is meeting or exceeding. So it's, it, the numbers tell one piece of it, but then you really have to look at the, the charts and graphs to see what that really means because to me, the numbers could look, I mean, what's a 38 or a 37 or a 36? Well, it's 10 to 60 in the writing, it's not 10 to 90. So even in the ELA, the two score ranges are different. So it could be pretty confusing to a parent. And I would, if, if they, we'll be working with this more as we get it out. People, usually Eva Kelly will do a parent night and include this in some of her presentations. We'll be working with the principals on Wednesday. But if there are questions about either the reports or the backside, which is the information about, so what can you do to help and how, how can we help you understand this, we're happy to help parents. And again, the UnderstandTheScore.org, I just pulled it off. It's in a question-answer format. They highlight pieces of the report and make the information kind of accessible to parents. There is a flip that the UnderstandTheScore.org can be translated into Spanish on the website. So it's, it is a resource for parents. The second document that we, I just distributed is directly from the Department of Ed and in case you're wondering, this is the testing schedule for the rest of the year. So the first page in red is the park test and the test administration, there's only going to be one session and it's for computer-based tests, April 25th to June 6th. So it's a little bit later. And then for paper and pencil, it's April 25th to May 27th. Usually the MCAS, the ELA and Math MCAS were over by the last week in May and science kicked in usually the first week of June. So the rest of this document are the MCAS tests and the, especially for the high school, but science grades, there is not, none in grade three and four, but it's five and eight. The assessment will be May 10th to 24th. And then for the high school, the science test is late. It's usually, and it is again, the first week of June, June 1 and 2. So there'll be an overlap with the high school science for that in the end of park. There's an awful lot of overlap throughout for these testing windows. So as time goes along, we'll, the first of the year, parents will hear more about the test prep that happens. We, again, we don't know yet, yet, until we talk to the principals, which schools will be using computers, which will do it, paper and pencil. We have sufficient technology. Sometimes decisions are made about which venue based on staffing and mobilizing the resources and the time in the, in the buildings, but, but we're not going to cut back on our use of technology for instructional purposes, even if we administer paper and pencil.
Will that be a school-by-school decision, did you say?
Yes.
Paper versus
Computer. We'll all be doing park, three to eight, grades three to eight, but it's a, based on the principal's conversation with us.
And is it timed again?
Yes. There is no
Yeah, that hasn't changed.
No willingness to change that model. It's the allocated time plus 50%.
So the
I was going to say, if they all go computer, will we have enough computers?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
And then on the new version, MCAS, whatever?
2.0.
Yeah. Will it, will that be untimed again, like it was?
No. It, it may change to some extent, but it will always be timed. They did provide at the last Urban Superintendent's meeting on Friday morning, they had some statistics in terms of, because the students fill out a survey at the end of the, you know, and how many didn't finish and whatever and it, the percentage is pretty small of people who And the percentage is pretty small of people who said they were rushed or they didn't finish. So, they're chalking that up right now to the newness of the technology. And their view is that in a few more administrations, that will be, and they're making some changes to the test also. But right now, this spring, all the conditions of last time are still in place for this spring administration.
Students with IEPs can still have some on-time tests?
Yes.
Yes.
And their suite of accommodations.
That's the one exception.
Accommodation.
And MCAS 2.0 will eventually all be computerized?
Yes. By 2019.
Okay. They're eliminating the long composition at grades four and seven. So, that, the assessment will incorporate the kinds of writing across genre and more literary or informational text analysis than the sort of open, creative, whatever the long composition.
And they have made some changes to the test. For example, the size of the text box is going to be changed. The text box was very small so that students could only see a certain amount of text. And that was either, oh, that's all I can fill in, or I have a really hard time keeping track of what I'm writing when I can only see a little bit. So, that, that feedback was taken and is going to be changed. For this April, it'll be changed?
That's what we're hearing.
Yes. Yes.
So, we just, since some of you are parents and will be getting these reports. And there are parents out there who watch school committee meetings. We wanted to let everyone know, these parent reports are on the backpack message system on the way home. And if you have questions, to contact the school because this is important.
I actually found these easier to read. And maybe it's the color, maybe I'm a visual person, but that graphic right there was really helpful.
Excellent.
The only thing is, like, you know, we know, there's no item analysis. So, it's not like you can naturally say, oh, this is what you can work on.
And it won't be for the next one either. There won't be this spring. That's been a concern. Because for a lot of schools, I mean, we've been training our staff to use the item analysis.
Yeah, right.
So, that's the downside, is for two years, you're not getting any of this item analysis back.
That's not good.
So, it's, that's.
You don't know where they're falling down.
Right? Well, we have other assessments. We have other assessments, but it's not like, we, people got used to it. We really were using these data.
And just one other thing. And through Title I money and some United Way grant money and a grant that we're waiting to hear from the Worcester Health Foundations, we will have after-school programs in all of our schools, starting as soon as people can be hired.
That's excellent.
So, we have, they, they don't replicate the 21st century infrastructure, but we'll have two hours, four days a week, for up to two staff members for each of those hours. So, in theory, you could have four different groups of kids. And some of the principals are managing their time a little differently. But Title I is funding the program at Memorial, Rhingold, South Street, and supplementing the small Title I program at Long Joe. Pittsburgh High has their general sort of continuum of programs and United Way grant funding for their credit recovery program. We wrote the Worcester County Health Foundation's grant for McKay to replicate, similar to what we're doing with Title I. And Crocker has 21st Century. So, except for Goodrich, we'll have after, before and or after-school programs, four days a week, in all of the schools. So, this, even though we don't have an item analysis, this is where the school-based leadership team can analyze the student performance levels. The Title I-funded programs are academic enrichment. So, they need a pre- and post, it's Title I. So, there needs to be evidence that it's academic, that it supports accelerating student improvement, that it's either STEM-focused or literacy, humanities-focused, literacy or social studies. Mr. Puma is running a couple of them, but we're working, we have a menu of choices, a school newspaper, a chess club, math league, those kinds of activities. So, that's starting, most, I think most of them are starting up after the holidays. So, but even without an item analysis, this can help point either kids or families. And again, if families are interested or they're concerned, contact the school.
That's tremendous news. That news about, I heard about it from Mrs. Clark at Rhingold. And I had been talking to Paula earlier and that, I mean, that is such an enormous benefit for everyone, you know, everyone's kids who, the point of the after-school is so varied and so, you know, I mean, I've seen so many inspiring things. And these are our teachers who choose to do this, which is a very cool thing there. So, it's deepening that relationship as well. And kids really see school as, you know, just such a place where they can explore. The fascinating Pittsburgh Pilot Program, that was five weeks and those kids couldn't wait. I mean, I literally had children like, can I have that? Like grabbing books, like, you know, so eager for something like that. So, thank, thank you so much, really. I, thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Well, so, the last piece is a donation to Goodrich Academy of food, perishable foods to the Food Pantry for $350.
And this was collected for, before the Thanksgiving Day game? So, although the, is that correct? No?
No, this is different.
Okay.
This is a different donation.
Oh, got it. Goodrich Academy. So, just to put it out there, I know that the Red Raider Pantry is always looking for toiletries and snack foods. And Pete and Claudia Stevens, I know, have, have done donations. We're going to do a donation. You can drop those off for the public, drop those off at any school, just earmark Red Raider Pantry, and they will get there. They will get to where they're needed. Policy item, Internet Publication Number 5502. We have that before us. There is no additional public testimony. We will have an executive session. And we now move on to the action items. Number 15636, approve the superintendent's recommendation to accept the donation of non-perishable food items estimated value $350 to replenish Good.
Motion to accept it.
Accept. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Yay. That is approved unanimously. 15637, approve the superintendent recommendation to approve the second reading of the Internet Publication Number 5502. Motion to accept.
Motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Number 15638, approve the superintendent's recommendation to accept warrant Number WG16024 in the amount of $409,784.81 a live warrant.
Motion to pay the bills.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion to go into executive session for the purposes of negotiation.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Roll call vote. Beth Walsh?
Yes.
Marissa Fleming?
Yes.
Matt Bruin?
Yes.
Mr. Pete Steeman?
Yes.
And I am in favor. Jean Lavelle Pierce?
Yes.
Yes. All right, we will go into executive session, returning only for purposes of adjournment. Thank you very much.